D six, consider request of Realty Capital Management to rezone a forty-seven point two six nine acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey abstract number five oh four from interim holding IH Light Commercial LC and Heavy Commercial HC zoning districts to a planned development PD zoning district. The property is located on East Highway three seventy-seven to the south and the west of Overstreet Boulevard. This is Z dash two zero two one dash one two. Shad?
Thank you Chair. So this is a pretty exciting product, our project that we've been talking for a while with, with the Realty Capital team. But the project here, it encompasses this roughly forty-eight acres, the, one of the last undeveloped tracks on the lake to my recollection. But the request here tonight is to take it from a mix of zoning districts to a planned development for a mixed-use development. And we do have the Realty Capital team here that put a presentation on, or to provide you a presentation with some slides. So I'm going to hand it over to them. I'm just going to go through some things really quick. They're going to go over some of the details and concepts of the planned development. You, as you're aware, that's attached to your, your staff report packet, a pretty complex set of standards to govern the development within those, that acreage. We did send out six property notices for this within two hundred feet. And we did receive one from the property owner, but as far as the adjacent property owners, we received zero letters in favor and zero letters in opposition. As I noted in the report, staff's very supportive of this project. I also detailed in the staff report some of the goals and objectives of our twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan, which this project definitely hits on. We do have an alteration in our recommendation. We just had some, some fine-tooth items. Sometimes it takes a couple of eyes to go over things. We've relayed this to the Realty Capital team. Some of the things that we noted, and I'll go through those after this slide. Some of the, the note, the items that we wanted to kind of bring to the forefront, kind of the, the big-ticket items are building heights, obviously, as part of their PD requirements, what they're looking for in Zone A is a maximum height of five stories. That's, you know, it's, 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 this is a unique development, so I'll kind of leave it at that and let them talk to it. We've also added some requirements in there per staff's recommendation for rooftop and other mechanical, or, excuse me, mechanical equipment to kind of achieve an increased building height for those elements. The other thing that I want to note here is tree mitigation. One of the aspects of this development, again, I'll let the, the development team talk about this, is the fill that they will need to bring into this site. And as part of that, they're requesting to not have tree mitigation applied to this development. And then the last item that I'll go over is just regarding commercial-ready buildings on the first floor within Zone B. That's kind of the, the potential for mixed-use buildings. So these are things that we've noted, just want to make sure that, that you guys are comfortable with those. As far as our recommendation tonight, we talked to one of the development team members today, just a couple of clarifications that we need in the PD document. So I realize you haven't seen this. Again, this was something that we, that we put together kind of later in the afternoon. And it's just regarding some corrections or deletions for some of the language pertaining to maintenance, dedication, FIAs, and some other things that are more kind of on the administrative side. Applicants aware of these and has agreed to make the changes. We are recommending that if you do approve or act favorably tonight, that you will approve with the said conditions. And for the last part of my report before I hand it over to the applicant, I just put your voting options up here as far as the PD, which you do, you have your, your four options, approve, approve with modifications, conditions, table, or deny. So I'll leave those up here, or actually, I'm going to hand it over to the applicant if they want to come to the podium. They put together a presentation, so I'm going to bring that up and then they are going to walk you through that. Let me, yes ma'am.
Thank you, Shad. I'll open the public hearing and let the applicants proceed.
My name is Tim Coltart. I'm with Realty Capital out of Irving, nine oh nine Los Kalinis Boulevard. Very excited to be here. Thank you very much for having us. We got, it's been a long road to get to this place. We've been working on this project for over two years and I'd certainly like to acknowledge both Brady and Lee Overstreet, the owners who have been the most committed, focused, and helpful landowners that I've had the pleasure to work with. They are very vested in seeing an exciting project come to this, what is it, exactly as you said, the, one of the last remaining lakefront properties. On my staff, myself, and by the way, if anybody has any trouble understanding me, please let me know. I'm from New Zealand, so I've got a little bit of an accent. I've got Austin, Austin Gray, who's with my firm, and Dan Quinto, who does all, he's written this long document and has, we've all worked significantly with your staff, with city management, and I really want to compliment you all on having a great team. These projects are complicated and we are following a model that is, I think, new to some of the staff here, but they have rolled their sleeves up, gotten involved, talked to other cities that we've worked in, and really done the background hard work over the last two years to get us to where we are now. So, um, there we go. Okay, so can anyone, can, do you all have screens in front of you, I'm assuming? This is a rendering here of the project that was put together over the last six months or so, and it's really the culmination of a whole lot of hard work, numerous site plans, and it's an save and accept the yacht, which I'll, I'll certainly acknowledge probably wouldn't get under the bridge. What we have is a really attractive project that's, you know, we talked about trying to make it similar to downtown. That presents some of its own challenges, and I think that, given where the site sits, it can really have its own identity and pull pieces of historical architecture together that are consistent and really make this into a gateway project. It's the first project you'll see when you're driving north on three seventy-seven. I'm going to walk you through a few slides here. I'll try to be quite quick. How do you judge a developer? I can tell you that we're not going to be here, I don't think, talking about detention. We're not going to be talking about, well, we'll be talking about parks because there's lots of them. And we really have a succinct development plan. We have, what you're seeing right now is a project we have in Flower Mound. We started in two thousand and ten when the city of Flower Mound, which is a notoriously difficult city to work in, they have very high standards, and we were successful in two thousand and ten in obtaining approval for a hundred and fifty acres, about two thousand units. We've since, we're probably about three-quarters of the way developed through. Now includes a fifteen-story condo tower. I promise I'm not proposing to build one here. But a very successful project with four of the top ten restaurants in Flower Mound actually are located within our project. You'll see here, this is a couple of other projects. Main Street Loss and Watson Branch, both are in Mansfield. Both are under construction right now. And Main Street Loss, a big catalyst project for the downtown Mansfield Terres district, really up the standards and to date still has the highest rents in town. This is Harvest. It's a joint venture that we have with, with Hillwood, and we've been building that out. It's about four thousand homes. It's been built primarily in the last ten years, the fastest growing, fastest selling community in the metroplex for at least three of those ten years, and really is a fabulous project. Some other projects, last, last year we zoned and we are now in construction with a project called Center Stage, which was the first mixed-use project approved in the city of Keller since, I think, around two thousand and two. And what I guess those projects tell is a story of, of our development group, where we look for places that have high barriers to entry. We don't succeed very well in building the low end. We look for properties that are on lakes, that have great school districts, that have a consistent council and leadership that ensures that we're not spending X to build a really nice project only to be undermined by somebody right next door that doesn't have the same standards that our project does. And this was an article that was in D Magazine. There were two lists, I guess, is where they got it right and where they got it wrong. We had no projects on the getting it wrong list. We've made plenty of mistakes, don't get me wrong, but we had two projects that were on where developments got it right. And mixed-use development is an incredibly challenging type of development, comes with its own set of challenges, the different uses and how they compete, but I'll walk you through. But a couple more details here on projects. We can all show pretty pictures. That's, especially with renderings now, I can tell you some of these were actually hand-painted. But if you look on the left, those are the pictures we showed, and on the right is what was built, going as far back as Colleyville. I know that there's some experience here from Colleyville, great town, I live in Colleyville. We've learned a lot of lessons on mixed-use and what makes it work. You'll see here on the next slide, Colleyville on the top, below that is North Richardson Hills, the venue at Hometown. That is a vertically integrated mixed-use project. We may talk some more about that, but you'll see the rendering on the left and what was built on the right. And that project would be close to twenty years old now, it still looks great. So coming to our site, you know, one of the, I'm going to skip forward here because I'm, I guess I'm getting older and even with glasses, it's a little hard to see there. What you'll, the amazing thing about the site is where it is. The city's already invested significant infrastructure. We're not looking at, really, all the utilities and everything around us. The only thing that's lacking is productivity and a place for people to go. And so there's a few challenges with it. A lot of it's in the flood zone right now, so obviously we plan to correct that by importing dirt and raising it up so that we can ensure that it's not in the flood zone. Access and its proximity to where the bridge is is somewhat of a challenge. We're quite sure we will not get a median cut so that we'll have, all we will have is a right-in and a right-out from three seventy-seven. What that means is if you're heading south on three seventy-seven, your opportunity to turn into our project would be at Overstreet, so using the signal to the north. I feel confident it's the best waterfront site in Granbury. I'm really pleased that it had some challenges because I think it's, it's a, it's a great time to be developing this. I think it will become a catalyst-type project, and what I mean by that is that it will benefit some of the surrounding properties significantly by actually putting them in the middle of a quality development where we're bringing people in and embracing the waterfront. I know that city council and city management are working on the extension of Overstreet, and we are working on some pretty significant development partnership opportunities on how to build this entire project at once. What you will see here is a very small snippet of the city master plan, a comprehensive plan, and you know, really, our project is quite consistent with what has been visioned here, so I guess you all can take credit for the idea, not us. I think that what we have done together with, with staff and, and the meetings that we've had with council is really fine-tune and find ways to make this something that's special and something that we can all be proud of. I'll show you some inspirational pictures. The top left here is in our Lakeside project, restaurant, a little Italian restaurant called Mio Nono. We have a very, very small, less than half an acre park right next door to it. We use it for Christmas tree lightings. We have Friday concert series, and this place is packed, and sometimes smaller is actually better for a gathering. Nobody wants to go to a party in a big room with not many people. People want to go to a party, well, I guess it depends on if it's COVID, but used to be that way. We have, the picture on the right is, is a, is a picture taken from Lakeside, and then, you know, the other pictures are really just inspirational pictures that we think reflects how the waterfront and the restaurants that are on the waterfront may look and appear. As far as your project features, you know, these are pictures from our product type, mainly focused on the residential piece. I'm sure there'll be questions as to, you know, what type of units are these? Who are the renters for these units? None of this is subsidized housing. We are looking for renters by choice. We are looking to bring a younger demographic, really to create a diverse place that people want to come. And, and the reason they're going to want to come, everybody knows the answer, is because it's right on the water. It's, it's waterfront that's a rarity in Texas. A little bit about timing, I'm not going to go through each of these, but we have, we've been working on this for at least a couple of years. We had to do some land management to take care of some of the, the issues that were involved on the property. We have kept city council involved with, I believe, three different executive sessions where they've had the chance to comment on our land plan, and they came up with some great ideas, actually. You know, we've just applied for our zoning, assuming that we're able to obtain your support tonight, would like to go to council in December. As we go through, we just submitted our climber, which is really the biggest challenge, and what a climber is, is it means that we can reclaim the dirt. It says that the city, our engineer, and FEMA all agree that when we build our site up, that we're not going to have any adverse impacts on any of our neighbors, anybody upstream or downstream. That's about a six-month process, so we hope to have that approved middle of next year, which would take us straight into the substantial reclamation. I think we're looking at about a hundred thousand cubic yards of dirt we need to bring in, so there will be some impact on three seventy-seven. Obviously, we want to have those trucks come in and out as quickly as we can because they don't, we'll be paying for them while they're sitting in traffic. We'll then be installing utilities and we should begin vertical improvements in twenty twenty-three. We are already talking with hotel users and groups, and we would like, our plan is actually to bring all of this to fruition at the same time because each component benefits from the other. The reason people are going to want to live in the single-family here is because of its proximity to the restaurants and vice versa. Obviously, the connection of Overstreet will make a big difference, and we'll talk about a few of those items right here. I guess this is really what is Lakeview Landing, and what it is, is a place for the community to go, to dine. We always look for parks to be, a park for everybody. These are not, we don't look at these as being private parks where we gate them off and use them only for our residences. Ironically, we actually had discussions with council where we were saying, no, no, we really need to keep this for the public because that's what will make the restaurants succeed. We are in a very interesting retail environment. We have, our access, I think, is, is okay, but really what we're looking to do is create a place that people want to go and give them a reason to be down there, and when they're, when they're down there, they're going to spend money. So not just building a grass park, but how do we amenitize the park? What features does it have? Why, why do people want to go down there? How do we take care of the sun, the bright sunshine that's there every afternoon? Yeah, so we've got a, a lot of lakefront lots. It was council's idea to create the island that you're seeing. It's not quite an island, it is a land connection, not a bridge connection. Public boardwalk, I would like this to be golf cart friendly. I know a lot of you live close to the lake and, and quite close to this project, and we foresee this as somewhere where people are able to drive their golf carts up, hang out at the park, let the grandkids run around, and we plan to create reasons for them to be there. I talked a little about the type of demographics we're looking for. Our overall project density is about thirteen units per acre, again, consistent with the master plan. And the hotel we're looking to build down here, I think, is arguably the best hotel site in town, very visible, and I think we're happy to discuss the, the height concern too. Some of the other features, about sixty percent of the projects are commercial and single-family. These are market rate units. Would like to bring, we'd really like to have a very diverse community here. As far as the control of, this is a long document, and, and I understand that it's a complicated document. Really what it does is it defines the rules under which we can develop, and it ensures, I had a lot of things, you know, the charm of Granbury, you know, that's one of the fundamental pieces of this code is to require that housing meets certain standards, that we have awnings in certain places, that the parking and the trees, that it actually feels like a place where you've got tree-lined streets, where the trees are in between the curb and where the traffic is and where the pedestrians are. The things that lots of people don't think about, but they make for a nice place. And those are really significantly outlined in here. You'll see the different zones. There is some flexibility, there are some, some different rules which define what can and can't be changed. We have included the rendering within our zoning code, really trying to make sure that what we're showing, that you can feel confident that what we're showing you is what gets built. The different zones, Zone A is really the, the retail area with the restaurants, with about twenty-four thousand square feet of restaurants and just in-line retail. And then we have a, a hotel that we plan to have around a hundred different rooms. Zone C, Zone B is your higher-density residential, multifamily. It has some components of storefront, and what that means is that certain components of it have a high standard where they are required to have awnings and, and actual stoops where you're direct accessing the street. Really, the, the way that we build a project like this is almost inside-out. You really, you, it's all about activating the street, having people on the street. That's what creates an environment that people feel safe in. If you go to Zone C, that is single-family, we're looking around a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty homes, and there's a mix of different home types. So you have some townhomes that back up to the back of the big boxes where the staples and the beels is, all the way through to, you have some patio homes. Our patio homes in our Lakeside project, we started some of those at three hundred thousand, they're now well over five hundred thousand dollars apiece. It's a really nice home type, and, and the reason that they work is, I heard some of the questions before about where do the children play. We have parks, we have the environment that actually gets people out on the street, and that's really why people pay extra to live in a place that's walkable. Zone D is a active adult-style project with about two hundred units. These are some of the challenges that we're working on with city management. Obviously, access, you know, we don't have direct, we've got the right-in, right-out access to three seventy-seven. We're bringing in a whole ton of dirt. There is some challenge when you're reclaiming this close to the lake, that you have a high water table, and so we have to address our foundations to ensure that the buildings stay where they're supposed to. We've read too much about that in the news. You have some of the environmental challenges, the climber, and, and just the general retail market. How big is the project? We're showing about a hundred and fifty million dollar project. I think these numbers are quite conservative, but it will be a very large contributor, probably the first large contributor to a Terres that's being proposed for this area, to help with some of the infrastructure around there. What I'm most excited about is it's a gateway project. This is prime time every time you drive in and out of Granbury, so we think that that is a great thing for the surrounding retail, some of which has been struggling for a long time. We're about three miles into a long stretch of, of, you have some legacy development. You know, we will be competing with that, that is some, that's a reality. I think that the lake will offer a unique environment for our restaurants, and we're certainly excited about that. As far as total income, taxable income, I think we're showing around nine hundred thousand dollars a year. With that said, I had a few notes written down here, I just wanted to make sure I hit on everything. I think the biggest difference I see is you've got something that's unique here that's, that I, we've spent a lot of time trying to come up with what fits, and I think it's a really nice transition from three seventy-seven with forty thousand vehicles a day all the way across to the edge of our property. We are talking and cooperating with our adjacent landowner, but when the, when Overstreet connects through to Water's Edge, you know, that's going to be a great addition, especially with the work that's going on three seventy-seven, but this type of project really creates a place that people are going to want to go to. And with all the waterfront improvements, the trails, the connections, you know, our goal would be for there to be, where you feel safe that your kids, your grandkids can ride their bikes down here and they're not trying to cross over major lines of traffic. There's, there's trees in between, and it's just a nice environment. We have a lot more work to do in terms of exactly what gets amenitized into the park. We're talking to Parks, we're talking to the city manager and we'll filter through to Parks Department. One of the most exciting things about this is we're expecting to spend a pretty significant amount of money amenitizing the park to make sure people are there, and that will be required within a development agreement that we will be executing with council too, so that you know what you're getting. But obviously, the zoning is the first step. It's a complicated document. Again, I appreciate staff's work to get it to where it is right now, but we'd love to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. John?
Of course. Let me say first that I'm, I'm very familiar with Realty Capital and the, and the projects that you have undertaken and completed in the mid-cities, and they are phenomenal developments. And how is Richard, by the way?
Rich as well. Richard, myself and Jimmy now are three equal partners, and I think we're, we've learned a lot of lessons on some of those projects.
I know, and we don't need to relive those.
No, we don't.
The, but I, I think that this could be truly a great development for Granbury. My only concerns are traffic and parking. You know, those are the real concerns. The rest of it, if you can somehow accommodate all the vehicles that are going to be involved in this development so that it doesn't become a perpetual traffic jam. And of course, that's access and egress.
Yep.
I, I think it's a home run for the city of Granbury that you guys are here.
Yeah, so just to address the tra, you know, it's a necessary evil, you know, one of the things that you try to achieve, if you're really thinking about a nice dining environment, it isn't looking out at a parking lot full of vehicles, and it is, that's rare. And so we, with Village of Colleyville, we had some, we had some parking concerns, not enough parking. We came back in, we tore up the median and rebuilt all the parking, you know. It is a necessary evil. What we try to do is we try to hide the parking where we can, and you'll see that in the design here of the- design here of the high-density residential, where it's internal to the block, but we keep that urban structure on the outside. Shared parking is another, a great way to do that. You've got different uses that, that use, that are busy at different times of the day. The other thing that we have is we've got, right next to us, Shops of Granbury has a, has a really huge parking lot that I think we drove through there this afternoon. I think there were about eight, maybe twelve cars over on the edge. So there's a lot of parking there. I'm not sure I can, as far as traffic impact on 377, that is absolutely a concern. Overstreet connecting through will help with that. You know, I think that having a destination and seeing that be successful is, is the most important part. Will we have an impact on traffic? Yes, I think that Overstreet will take away some of that, and hopefully, people are getting on their golf carts and electric bikes as well, and coming down here with less impact on the streets.
Randy?
Okay, mine's short. Prior to my Granbury life, I lived twenty years in Colleyville, and I watched that project grow up. And yes, parking was a concern in that area, so do you feel like you've rectified that at this project?
Yeah, I think, I mean, the Colleyville project, here's what I love about that project. It still looks great today.
It does.
The challenge that you have there is, there's not much traffic on 26. In Colleyville, you understand the politics there of doing many things to prevent traffic from driving through town. I live on, just off Eldy Lockett, and it is just a struggling retail environment. That project's built back off the street. The other big thing, I think, that really hampered that project was the way that the residential could only be built with the, with the retail ground floor, and it had to be condo title. And that was a big thing for a long time. I always tell cities, do you want to have one person to call when the paint looks bad? Or do you want to be calling two hundred different owners and trying to work out how to take care of that? So I think that's, that combined with the, you know, where Market Street went, you know, it's, it's a mixed bag in there. You know, we had a great opportunity at the entrance. I don't know if you recall the liquor store, the
Oh, yes, yes.
So lots of things to look at. I think we've rectified the parking. That's probably the thing that we spent the most time on, is trying to make sure that you're not looking at a parking lot. If it looks like a parking lot, we've done something wrong.
Okay. And did I hear you mention that this would be about a thirteen-year project?
No, I said thirteen units per acre is our overall density. Our goal, and what I'm working with immediately after zoning, that we're talking through now combined with the TERS, is a plan that actually gets all of this built on the front end, so that you're not waiting for all the pieces to come. And if you, if you think about the reclamation project alone, we've got a, we need to bring all the dirt in and build it up so that you end up with a solid seawall. And so the same goes with the streets. We want to put all the public streets on the front end, including the residential and the commercial. The hotel and the multifamily will be the first things to kick off the ground, because nobody wants to open a restaurant in the middle of a construction zone. But the beauty of that is, I think that PNC and Council are voting on what we're actually proposing to build, not a phased project, that can, that leads to challenges because markets change.
Okay. And lastly, my wife wants to know when it can be built and the restaurants open. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got plenty, too. I don't know if Richard's, once ago, I got plenty.
Go ahead, Richard. Okay, go ahead, Tim.
I would just say, I've been a commercial general contractor for thirty years in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. I'm very familiar with your work. You guys do great quality work. I would echo what Randy and John both said about your projects. I do have a few questions. So just from a general contractor point of view, where in the world are you going to get six feet of forty-acre fill?
I actually don't know the answer to that. What I do know is that, is that our contractor knows where it's coming from. It'll be a pit somewhere. We just, we just brought in eighty thousand cubic yards in Mansfield. I'd like to, we're exploring whether or not we can dig it out of the lake. I'm not sure that fill will be, it's a select fill we need because we're building on top of it, as you know. So I don't know the answer, but I can certainly find out.
Sure. Let me ask you also, it appeared that you're cutting back the property, at least in one of the pictures, it showed a blue line that was different color than the lake. Are you cutting the property backs? There we go. Are you cutting that back to make that lake larger, or are you actually going with the true property lines at?
I think it's not, yeah, the blue is, is water. Is that correct? I'm trying to see.
Okay, so you're not cutting back? Okay. To increase the size of, you'd be increasing the size of the lake, I guess, if you were to do that. But the canal, I was under the understanding that there was a moratorium on canals by Brazos River Authority. Have you, do you, can you enlighten us on that?
I did not believe, any discussion, we have not heard the same from, we've talked to Brazos River Authority. Our conversations with them have been, we understand what you're doing. We understand the city of Granbury has standards now that match our standards, and we plan to meet or exceed those. But I'm not aware of any, they've not given us
Like, I've never seen anything written. It's always been just a vicious rumor I've heard for years upon years.
I think, I, that conversation, I mean, they were supportive, open, but said, look, this is, and maybe that's part of their communication tactic. I don't, I think they said, look, you guys move ahead with what you're doing.
Yeah.
We don't really want to be involved in it.
Okay. I just want to throw that out there, because that's something I've heard for years and years and years, living here.
I think that was prior to the standards being put in place by which, I think that previously, the city of Granbury did not have canal standards, and those have now been put in place to match the BRA standards.
That's right. Roughly 2009 or so, we added some canal standards to our subdivision ordinance, and my understanding, those were, if not verbatim, very well matching what the BRA already had in place.
Okay. All right. How is the phasing of this? Is this one big project? Are you going to phase the different zones, or?
So challenging question to answer, I think. I hope I don't confuse you more with the answer. I think our goal would be, and what we're working on with the city in terms of finance, and in terms of how to finance it, is we would like to build all of the infrastructure in one phase. So that means bringing in all of the dirt, building all of the public streets, putting in, you know, there's a lift station in there, there's some pressure reducers, do all of that in one phase. And that, to me, has been really important, because when that doesn't happen, it leads to change with market, and I think it's hard to ask Council to, hey, this is, here's the picture I'm showing you, here's what we plan to build, but I don't know what the market's going to be like in ten years.
Yeah.
So our goal is to build all the infrastructure, day one, including the park. You know, as I outlined, I think the multifamily and the hotel would be the first to break ground from a construction standpoint. I could easily see the single-family coming along at the same time. The restaurants, we're going to have to make sure we're timing so that we're not trying to have you sitting out on a patio in a construction zone.
Yeah. If you were handed your permit today, and you were at clearance from, say, FEMA and the BRA, what, what kind of timeframe of construction do you, do you believe this is?
So, once we have the climber in hand, if we had that in hand and we had the development agreement in hand, you're probably looking at three to four months for the dirt work. You're then looking at, you know, nine to twelve months for the project infrastructure, the streets, the sewer, the water. You're then looking at eighteen months for the hotel, and the, you might be opening units in fifteen months, but you're looking at eighteen months for the completion of those single-family homes. I've seen, I've seen in Harvest, I think we had one built in twenty-one days, but they're probably going to take, you know, six months or so to get those built.
So it's about three years from just rough calculation, if you had a permit in hand?
Yeah, probably, maybe three and a half years, yep.
Okay. And I assume this is more for city staff or engineering. I assume this has all been calculated into our notorious wastewater issue. All right.
So, yeah, keep in mind that the moratorium, when it goes into effect, we have these projects.
Right, in the pipeline.
Right. So, yeah.
Bottomed intended.
This.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hayes?
Before I moved here to Granbury, I lived outside of Atlanta, where traffic ranges from horrible to impossible. And there was a big movement there to build what are called livable center initiatives, because a work-play, work-play, live, there we go, work-play-live, I should know this. Went to enough meetings on it. Work-play-live, where everything's together. And I see this in this, in this project, and I see all the best aspects of that brought into one. A lot of places couldn't pull it off outside of Atlanta because of the landowners. They didn't want to tear down their buildings or change their buildings. Decatur, Georgia, pulled it off brilliantly, and I see many of the same design concepts here. Parking in the middle of the block, bring the building fronts out to the edge of the right-of-way, make it very, very walkable, all the mixed use. You know, if I'm traveling, this is the type of hotel I want to stay in. If I park the car, I can walk to a restaurant. I don't have to drive someplace. But the real jewel here, I think, is the waterfront park. That's, that's going to be such a beautiful asset for all the citizens of Granbury. I think you and the property owners ought to be commended for giving all of us this wonderful gift that we'll all enjoy for many years to come. It's a great plan. Thank you for putting it together.
Thank you very much.
Just one quick question. What, if any, plans do you have for the property that's just south of this project that butts the island subdivision?
I believe you're referring to the Parish property, the one that's, that's just, that butts us. I think that they already have some plans, they've got a, I think they have some senior entitlements for a senior center. I think we would look to expand the single-family residential across that site. And what we tried to do is, there's a small section in here, it would be subject to Council's approval also, but we do have the, there is a provision that outlines within our code that contemplates that, but I would see it as a single-family.
So you, the one you hit the slide you have up, the very first thing is concerning to me the most. The way that the bulk of the, it's just only using Overstreet Boulevard. It seems like a lot of, a lot of residents that you've named off, a lot of stuff that has to come out that one street. I mean, I realize you've got the right-in, right-out of 377, but that's not going to take too much out. Do, I mean,
It's even, it ties into Water's Edge as well.
Yeah, so
But even still, that's, you've got to turn left there.
It's a great question.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, other than that, the concept's great. I just think, wow. We hardly even approve big subdivisions with that limited access.
It's a great question, and we often deal with that kind of question, right? You've got all this traffic, and where's it all going? And what you look to do is you look to find ways to give it many options to go lots of different ways. So right now, you have with, with Overstreet, which would be connected at the time that we would deliver this, multiple ways to get to Overstreet, multiple ways to get to 377. There are lots of, now, if you were going south, then your, your real option is to go to Overstreet and take a left at that light. I think the vast population of Granbury is on the, is on the northern side, that they can benefit from the right-in, right-out, but lots of different options for ways to get onto 377, and lots of different ways to get to Overstreet is important. And you'll see, I think they're called Street A and Street B. If you'll see, we connect the parking lot, you see where the two retail buildings are in OS1, in the red? And then there's a park just to the south of that, or just below that, in Zone B.
This area?
Yeah, so we have, so there's one, two, three different connections there to the, to the east. And then you also have the connection that goes out to Overstreet through the single-family. And so that's four different options to go east. Now, I know that they all go to, they'll go to Overstreet, but there are options within the parking lot at Shops of Granbury, where you'll be able to go straight across Overstreet and go further to the, to the east, should you choose. And that's really the way that, if you, it goes back to the grid light, that's why gridded streets and, just like downtown Granbury, work so well, because traffic has lots of options. So
I agree with what you're saying, but there's times when you can't even turn out the Home Depot parking lot to even get to the light as it stands now, without any of this. I mean, you literally can't turn right till the light changes and it clears out.
I would imagine that what will happen is you'll end up with more traffic that goes across that has the choice of either using Overstreet or goes out to Water's Edge. Or come through our project and take a free right-hand turn straight out of
Wow.
By entrance. But I, I think that will be further discussed as we go through, you know, traffic impact and the likes. But the challenge is, is how do you balance that with also trying to make sure that you've got a, the right urban density to make a project like this look like it should? And it's a, it's a tough call. I think our discussions with engineering, I think we're all pretty confident that we can find a pathway forward.
Do we have a rendering where it shows where Overstreet ties into Water's Edge?
Over by the charter house, by the dentist?
I mean, I can, if you
Do we visualize exactly where it ties in?
Yeah, if you can visualize it
It goes around this charter house
That's correct.
The senior, that are right, by the, by the Dr. Tool's office, the dentist's office.
Okay, right there.
That's, that's Overstreet coming through there. So
That's right.
Just
It's a street with cul-de-sac right now. It doesn't
It's all asphalt.
We're just north, just north of Hill Boulevard. Just almost a jog past Hill Boulevard.
I think the intent is for it to be a four-lane, divided road with hike-and-bike trail each side. Is that correct, Shad? I believe that's
I believe hike-and-bike, is it both sides?
Yes.
Okay.
One side. Yep.
So a ten, a ten-foot hike-and-bike, I think a ten-foot hike-and-bike or twelve? Ten or twelve on one side, and then just a sidewalk around the other. But it'll be a pretty significant addition to, the interesting part about that will be how that actually impacts the traffic on 377, just having another option.
Any other questions, commission members for staff or for the applicant? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion on the rezon request, please.
Motion to approve.
Most, Shad, will you put up our, the things? And anything we need to make sure we do?
So again, what we're recommending is approval with conditions, so I noted that it follows
Suit with that, you don't have to read through these conditions, just if you do vote, again, we've already talked to the applicant about these changes, it would just simply be approval with the conditions as noted. That would suffice. I don't want to have to make you read all this.
Would you put back up the voting slide?
I apologize, yes, ma'am.
That's okay, thank you. Mr. Grace, would you like to further expand your motion based on our options?
Yes, make it Option B, approves the development plan, reasonable design, modifications.
Is that what you're talking about, the modifications with the
Yeah, it's, it's ultimately like a conditional approval, so just the modifications would be the, the items that we've pointed out here regarding the changes. So I think you can, if you, the reasonable approval with the modifications as noted, that certainly gets me where I need to be, and these would be changes that are added to the text of the standard document, which we've, we had kind of a powwow with the development team prior to the meeting to make sure that everything was agreeable on their end to make these changes, so.
So you have a, I think we have a motion by, will you put the voting back up, please?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Grace for conditional approval with the staff-designated modifications? Is that correct, Mr. Grace? Yes, John? That's your motion, wasn't that?
Yes, that's
Okay, that's your motion. Okay.
Perfect, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then we have a second by Mr. Hallman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries?